Good afternoon. The Committee on Environment, Revenue and Taxation, Labor Procurement, Statistics Research and Planning is calling this virtual public hearing to order. It is now 1:31 PM, Friday, June 18, 2021. A notice of this afternoon's virtual hearing was provided via email to senators, stakeholders and local media on June 11 and June 16, thus meeting the group of coordinates of open government law. Okay, the purpose of this virtual hearing is to receive testimony on the following items: The executive appointment of Attorney Manakshi V. Himlani to serve as a member of the Guam Solid Waste Authority Board of Directors. The second item is executive appointment of Ms. Alice P. Sebastian Cruz to serve as a classified employee, Real Estate Licensing Division, DRT representative of the Guam Real Estate Commission. The third item is to receive testimony on executive appointment of Attorney Stephen Carrera to serve as a member of the Guam EPA Board of Directors. And the fourth item on this agenda is to hear testimony regarding Bill Number 149-36COR, sponsored by myself Senator Sabina Flores Perez. It's an act to adopt the rules and regulations for the underground storage tank as transmitted by the Guam Environmental Protection Agency. The committee will continue to receive written testimony until 4:00 PM Tuesday, June 22, 2021. Please address testimony to Senator Sabina Flores Perez, Chairperson of the Committee on Environment, Revenue and Taxation, Labor Procurement, Statistics Research and Planning, and can be dropped off to the mailboxes at the Guam Congress Building or emailed to office@senatorparas.org. The rules of conduct for this hearing is that the host will mute all participants until called upon by the chair. When called to speak, please ensure that you are unmuted and that you're speaking into your microphone. And please identify yourself. The order of questioning would begin with the chairperson and any of my colleagues following. Individuals testifying shall be recognized by the chair, and questions shall be confined to the substance, the nature of the agenda. Personal inferences as to character of any senator or individual testifying is not permitted. Any violations will result in removal from the public hearing by the host. So now to begin our agenda. To receive testimony on the executive appointment of Attorney Manakshi V. Himlani to serve as a member of the Guam Solid Waste Authority Board of Directors. So some of the responsibilities as a board member of the Guam Solid Waste Authority Board includes the following amongst many others: to establish and modify with approval of the PUC reasonable rates and charges for the collections, transportation, disposal, storage, recycling, processing of solid waste to recover the full cost of providing solid waste management services. Another responsibility is that they enter into contracts and execute all instruments necessary or convenient in the exercise of its powers. They employ retainer contract for the services of qualified solid waste management specialists or experts as individuals or as organizations to provide technical advice and assistance. They are also in the process of selecting the new general manager, which is key. Another responsibility is to require the preparation of any necessary environmental impact assessments or environmental impact reports and plans for any mitigation measures. So notices were sent to Guam Solid Waste Authority, the chairperson of the board who is here to testify. We received testimonies all in support of the nominee by Attorney Enrodi J. Jacob, Attorney Cynthia Akube, Anthony Stewart, Vice President of AIC, and Attorney Wakan Areola Jr. So I would like to invite first those that come here to testify on behalf of the nominee, and then we'll follow up with the nominee herself. So I believe we have chairman. We have the chairman here to present testimony. So we can have Attorney Andrew Gale. You're recognized.
Happy day Senator Perez and the other members of the committee. My name is Andrew Gale and I am the Chief Operating Officer of GTA, as well as the Chairman of the Guam Solid Waste Authority Board of Directors. Thank you for the opportunity to testify on behalf of Manakshi Himlani. Ms. Himlani has been a valuable member of the GSWA Board of Directors for the past four years and has helped guide the GSWA through the partial end of receivership. She has been a very attentive board member, providing her insight from both a legal and human resources perspective. She currently leads a subcommittee tasked with finding a replacement for our current general manager, Larry Gass, who has expressed his desire to retire. With the recent enactment of Public Law 36-22, I am pleased to report that we are interviewing several qualified candidates for GM and hope to have a final candidate selected soon. Manakshi's demeanor and temperament during board meetings and sometimes contentious court hearings is quite admirable and exemplifies the best qualities for a board member. As the chairman, I have been able to rely upon her to meaningfully contribute to the function of the board and have called upon her frequently for her advice and input. I wholeheartedly support her to continue to serve as a member of the GSWA Board and urge the senators of this committee to recommend her confirmation. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you so much, Andrew, for your testimony and for your participation. So we do not have anybody else at this time to provide some oral testimony. So we like to invite the nominee herself, Attorney Himlani. Welcome.
Thank you, Senator Perez. Thank you to you and all the members of the 36 Guam Legislature for scheduling this confirmation hearing and providing me with an opportunity to speak with you. I also want to thank Governor Leon Guerrero for her confidence in reappointing me to serve as a member of the Guam Solid Waste Authority Board. When I first became a board member back in 2017, I had no idea how much I would learn about leche and permeable membranes and the challenges involved in recycling, nor did I previously appreciate the importance of tonnage comparisons, collar stations, the various trucking equipment involved in a solid waste operation, or the engineering design and physics involved in constructing a landfill. I mean, the amount of thought and geometry that goes into how you place solid waste so that it triangulates in a manner to maximize airspace is just, I'm just a lawyer. So it's been a great bonus educational experience for me, as well as an opportunity to serve my island and community. I say my island because my family moved to Guam from India when I was two years old, and it's important for me that Guam as my home should be best served. I've had the pleasure of working with our current board members, Andrew Gale, our chairman, who you just heard from, Peggy Denny, who's Guam's recycling champion, Jim Olerking, and Corazon Montalano, whose appointment the legislature recently confirmed, as well as past board members who have all shared the same commitment to improve our island's solid waste operations. And I'm sure members of the legislature are aware of the challenges GSWA has faced, and I've been witness to the progress made in the past four years, and I hope to be a part of GSW's continued improvements. Our general manager, Larry Gass, comptroller Catherine Kikigi, and other members of the management staff, as well as each employee of GSWA has been instrumental in realizing those improvements. And this legislature's support of GSWA has also helped our progress. In my last meeting with you, Senator Perez, you might recall that I told you how much I appreciated the swiftness in which the legislature passed Public Law 3622, because by expanding that educational criteria for the general manager position, we received a greater number of applicants who have incredible experience. And as much as we don't want to lose our current GM, it's encouraging that we're now able to attract candidates who have experience with biotech landfills and optics sorting. So, you know, my background and experience has been detailed, the nomination package I submitted, so I won't go into detail about that unless senators have specific questions for me. But in closing, I just want to say that I hope the members of the legislature will favorably consider my reappointment and allow me to continue serving Guam as a member of the GSWA Board. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much, Attorney Himlani. Yeah, we're very grateful that you accepted the nomination and, yeah, and as well as working with, you know, many of those that have saw Guam solid waste through the receivership and continue to see them through, you know, getting out of receivership completely. So we definitely appreciate your commitment to improving such an important utility that protects our environment. And we're very grateful for your expertise and I must say the collaboration that exists. You have such a great board considering all the different facets. And, yeah, we're very grateful that you are continuing as servicing our island. So I guess just a couple of questions. I know I asked this, you know, regarding our meeting, but just to put on the public record, do you have any conflicts of interest?
No, I do not.
Okay. And then regards to your, I guess, your participation, you know, how would you say your attendance has been in the board meetings?
I'm trying to remember. I don't think I've missed any meetings. Our chairman's pretty good about checking our availability before scheduling meetings. So I think I've been attending all of them.
Okay, great. Well, yeah, thank you for that. Yeah, and I think I do recall, you know, I do have my staff attend the meetings, and we do see that you're there, not only in person, but also you're very active in the discussions. So yes, definitely, you mentioned about having a pool to select from. How close are you to, you know, finding, or where are you in the process of selecting the new general manager?
We've conducted interviews with about five candidates, and I think we're at the point now where we want members of the management staff to speak to those same candidates to get their feeling on it. And then from there, Chairman Gale and I will probably whittle it down to two or three finalists, and we'll have to decide how to proceed. It's coming close.
Okay, that's great to hear that the progress is very swift on your end as well. Yeah, it's funny how you talk about, you know, your background did not include, you know, the geometry of landfills, but-
I never thought I'd use a quadrangle again after high school.
Yeah, but, yeah, I think that's maybe part of also attorney's training, right, is that you're kind of a multitasker. So, you know, the ability to be flexible and learn, pick up things very quickly is-
I suppose so, yes.
Okay, so as far as what is the plan, you know, what do you think the vision is for now in this new phase of Guam Solid Waste Authority? What are the challenges that you see? And what are some of the plans that you think can be implemented in the coming years?
Well, I think we're already working towards them. One is we're trying to find a new GM as much as we don't want Larry to leave. But we have a great pool of candidates, so I think we'll be okay. I'm feeling comfortable with that. We've also been working with the governor, and I'm sure you're aware as well about the islandwide garbage collection we're trying to work towards. That'll be a big project. I think when we have a new general manager, and we'll probably be looking as well towards education with recycling, I think that's very important. Because it's not so simple to just say, oh, yes, we'll recycle. Here's the card. There's a lot of education involved on how and what we can recycle. Otherwise, you know, nothing's springing to mind right now, but I know we have a bunch of things happening.
Great. Yeah, and I think too, one of the things, when, I guess, the ending of the partial receivership, there was a lot of us, it's of contracts.
Yeah, sorry, I forgot about that. I believe there's a status conference next week in the district court. If I'm not mistaken, it's on June 23. So we'll know what the status is at that point. With the pandemic, things have been delayed and pushed out. So the parties will be coming together to figure out where we are with the end of the partial receivership. And there will be management of contracts involved that our GM will be overseeing and will be taken care of as well. But we'll have to see how that moves forward.
Okay, because I know from my understanding that some of those contracts last a couple years, and is there any plans to rebid those contracts? I know Larry Gass was very interested in maybe getting a better deal with the contractors, and maybe it's too soon to tell right now. But, you know, what is your evaluation of that as far as getting better pricing on some of those contracts?
It is a little too soon to sell. Some of them, I remember that Larry was discussing whether it's something that GSWA could handle in-house, or there are certain things by court mandate that we are supposed to contract out, but it'd be too early for me to say just yet.
Okay. Okay, well, thank you for those updates, and, you know, we look forward to your confirmation. Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you.
So I would like to recognize Senator Brown. Thank you for joining us, and if you have any questions or comments for the nominee.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, for the opportunity. I certainly appreciate the interest of Attorney Himlani in wanting to serve and continue to serve on the Solid Waste Board, and I appreciate her insight with regards to certainly the challenges involved in the new landfill. I mean, that's minor unfortunately compared to the whole year, years in the history of getting to where we are now. But of course, each chapter has its own burdens. I mean, if I can ask Attorney Himlani, what do you see for the future for the landfill? I mean, we're hoping everything is being operated in compliance and the environmental requirements, everything we didn't have before when we had the old ore dump. But in your respective position on the board, what would you like to see moving forward? Of course, at some point, I'm hopeful you're going to have a qualified head of the agency to replace the outgoing manager now. But what is your vision for where we're going? I appreciate the outreach and information in the community and getting people more conscientious about the amount of things we actually do, you know, put into our waste stream. But what's your vision? Would you like things to go from here with regards to our solid waste operations, especially now that that's pretty much been turned over to the local government?
Well, our board had the opportunity to visit the construction of Cell 3, which is occurring now and should be completed fairly soon. That's why I learned about these permeable membranes is incredible, the amount of design and engineering that went into it. And then the land in Lezon has been marked for various cell constructions. So once three is done, it'll go to four, et cetera. So I was impressed with the manner in which it's being constructed and the projections for the future. And I think there are some discussions on how you can extend the life of each cell. So I think we're doing well, is my impression. It's very different from years past where you just dug a hole and you dumped things in there. So I think it's looking pretty good on that outset.
I wanted to ask because there's still an interest, and I've not been an advocate of it, obviously, with waste to energy, to incinerate trash because of the history. You're an attorney, but the history of how that whole issue came to be, I'm not sure if you're familiar with it. But what is your view if waste to energy were to be put in place or something similar to that that would multiply the cost of waste disposal on Guam? How do you think, if at all, that will affect your operations at the Solid Waste Authority?
You know, I don't know very much about it. I have heard about it, and there's so many different opportunities to do different waste management. I'm not very familiar with incineration. I don't know that our board has considered it at a board level. One of the candidates that we spoke to recently, and what I was saying, that we have all these new candidates with amazing experience, one of the candidates for GM was talking about biotech landfill. And there's so many new things that they have out there. And what this involved, what was fascinating to me is he explained that the leche, which tends to decompose things, and we don't want leaking out into the groundwater, obviously, but that leche is being used in a manner that it will come back up on the solid waste so that it decomposes quicker and it maximizes land space that way. So it extends the life of the landfill itself. So I think there's an opportunity for a lot of different things and different sorts of manners in running a landfill that we're just not familiar with yet. So, you know, of course, our board will be open to what's best for Guam, but there has-
I appreciate that. At some point, maybe it'd be good to get orientated on that issue. I mean, it's something I've fought for many years against, primarily just because of the history of how it came to be and the expectation that there's only one company we can do incineration with. I mean, it's old technology. I'm hopeful that the government of Guam will look, and certainly what you're talking about sounds very interesting. If there's other new technology that's available, that's environmentally friendly, that's cost effective, certainly, in how we can address the waste stream, that would be great. I mean, you know, we go shopping every day. We think nothing of all the things we procure and how quickly we dispose of things in this community. And of course, we're a small island, and I'm sure that the landfill is probably filling up a little faster than probably what they originally calculated. But certainly, if those are things that you're looking at that, you know, are in the best interests of our community, that would be wonderful. Because that, but do please, I think it would be good to get orientated on the history of that incinerator, because it keeps rearing its ugly head every now and then. And I'm not an advocate of it. I spent many years in my previous life in the legislature fighting against it because I thought it was a very bad contract for our community. But certainly, if there are alternate types of technology that are available that we can look at, I certainly would be hopeful of that. Because down the road, we're going to have to look at many other options. We just can't keep building landfills even though it took many years in a federal court order to get the current one in place. I think we all agree, we'd like to look at something that would be more compatible in our small island community. But again, thank you. I appreciate your interest and wanting to continue to engage and be involved in certainly an area most people don't think is very interesting, but a very necessary, critical area where very good decisions need to be made for our community. So thank you very much for your public service, and I certainly will be supportive of your nomination when it comes up for vote. Thank you very much, and thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Senator Tonyada, welcome, and you're recognized.
I don't have any questions, Madam Chair. I just got on, so I'll just go ahead and continue to listen in. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Senator Ada. It looks like there are no other persons here to testify. So again, yeah, thank you so much, Attorney Himlani, and you do have my support, and we'll get your nomination hopefully on the floor this session. So thank you so much. Have a great afternoon.
You too.
All right. So the confirmation hearing for Manakshi Himlani is now duly heard, and we are going to go on to the next item in our agenda, which is to hear testimony regarding the executive appointment of Ms. Alice P. Sebastian Cruz to serve as a member, classified employee, Real Estate Licensing Division of DRT representative of the Guam Real Estate Commission. So some of the functions of the Guam Real Estate Commission include to adopt rules and regulations relating to the administration of real estate as long as it adheres to the law. The commission is responsible for hearing client complaints towards licensed realtors and brokers and determining the judgments in terms of the complaints filed. The commission may make such recommendations and suggestions of policy to the commissioner as the commissioner deems beneficial and proper for the welfare and progress of real estate licensees and of the public and of the real estate business in Guam. So notices were sent to Department of Revenue and Taxation, the chairperson of the Guam Real Estate Commission, who I believe is here to testify. And we did receive testimony in support of the nominee from Chris Murphy, who is the Chairperson of Real Estate Commission, and Frank Pangolinen, both of who are part of the real estate industry. So, you know, welcome, Alice. I know you've been waiting since this morning. And we do appreciate your acceptance of the nomination. Yeah, I've had many conversations with you, and I'm looking forward to hearing your testimony today. And I, you know, definitely would like to share your commitment to the public as well. But I would like to invite first Chris Murphy, if he can turn on his video. If I can ask him to present first, and then we'll have you present later, if that's okay, Alice.
Okay. Hey, Senator, I'm having trouble getting the video working on my computer. So can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. Do you need assistance with that at this time?
Yeah, I was on a Zoom this morning for three hours, and now the video won't come up again. So I'm having trouble doing that.
Okay, so maybe we can waive that for now. Maybe something is technically cannot be fixed at this point. But yes, you're welcome to testify. But should your video come on, that would be good, too.
Okay. Okay, I'm not a very pretty face anyway, so you're not missing much. Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate the opportunity and their honorable Senator Brown and Ada for the opportunity to provide oral testimony in support of the confirmation of Alice P. Sebastian Cruz to the Guam Real Estate Commission. I've worked very closely with Alice as a member of the Real Estate Commission since 2016 and as a licensed real estate broker for over 15 years. Alice has an excellent working knowledge of the real estate division and is continually looking for ways to improve the system for all of the various stakeholders within the real estate industry on Guam. Her understanding of and experience within the government of Guam has greatly assisted the commission's efforts in addressing issues relevant to the practice of real estate within our island community. Alice demonstrates a high sense of urgency when it comes to addressing and/or resolving issues involving the real estate industry. Whether it involves questions on licensing, recommending and processing new educational courses, or following up on complaints involving real estate licensees, Alice does not procrastinate. She works to resolve the issue in a timely, accurate and professional manner. Alice is a team player who demonstrates strong written and verbal communication skills, which are critical when dealing with the many diverse and challenging issues involving the practice of real estate on Guam. During the challenges brought on by COVID-19 pandemic, Alice was instrumental in working with the real estate industry to keep its members well abreast and informed and up to date on protocol and issues affecting over 500 licensees on the island. Alice has been particularly helpful in the commission's efforts to upgrade and modify the Guam real estate licensing examination and establishing additional continued education opportunities for Guam licensees. This has laid the foundation for continued efforts in providing Guam licensees with the necessary training and tools to improve their skills and abilities, not only to make homeownership a reality for more of our residents, but to make Guam's overall real estate industry a viable and flourishing part of the economy. As the commission continues to look for ways to raise the bar within all aspects of the real estate industry, Alice has continually demonstrated a high degree of professionalism and integrity in meeting the demands of a changing environment. These character traits will become increasingly important as we continue to move forward to meet the challenges of a post-COVID-19 real estate community. Based on our past accomplishments and the need to continue building on those accomplishments, I strongly recommend that Alice be reconfirmed for an additional term as a member of the Guam Real Estate Commission. Thank you.
Thank you again, Chris, for your testimony and your endorsement of the nominee and all the work you've done together. I understand that you've collaborated on a lot of projects. And, yeah, we're working to try to make it a reality. So, yeah, we'll definitely continue to keep you in the loop. Thank you again for your time. So now I would like to turn to the nominee herself, Alice, for her testimony. So if you can unmute yourself.
Thank you, Senator Perez, and thank you also Senator John Brown and Senator Tonyada. I am excited to be here, although I'm a little nervous. It's been like four years since I have done this one, but I would like to really express my appreciation and gratitude that I'm nominated by the good governor to be a part again of the Real Estate Commission as one of the members. And there were so many things that I would like to tell. The time is really short. I would like to emphasize that the time when we had, it has been like 30 years, I think, since we had the last commission, and then we restabbed it again in January 2016. And henceforth, we've done a lot, and we would like to continue a lot to level up and to bring up the standard of the real estate business, both the commission and the industry. So I just would like to, I haven't written testimony on my background, and I think I'm not going to read that, but I'd just like to say something on my second portion, that this is my second term as nominee to serve as member of the Real Estate Commission. And the four-year term that has transpired brought me a lot of improvements to the real estate industry under the leadership of the commission, the commission chairman, and the diligence of all the members of the commission. The following are some accomplishments in the commission attained in the past four years. A new set of real estate licensing questionnaires were produced and delivered to the proctoring agency, the University of Guam, to update the examination to the present real estate business. We also have some of the pending real estate complaints from both consumers and licensees, and we are trying to review them, and we're recommending solutions to the real estate director as we look at the problems. the problems. The regular commission meetings were put in place. We did not have that before, and we activated the discussions on how to improve the real estate activities on Guam with the cooperation of both the industry and the commission. There were a little communication between the commission and the real estate office and the industry before. But when we established, reestablished the commission, we started the dialogue. And so right now we're doing lots of improvements so that we can properly communicate with them, and we can hear one another's problems or issues. So it's really, I'm really excited about what's going on right now. The members of the Real Estate Commission were finally complete. We used to be like only four, only five, and therefore we're lacking quorum. And so we're missing a lot of meetings. But right now, there's, there's already seven, which is exactly the number of the members of the Real Estate Commission. So I'm very happy on that aspect as well. Then the regular roster, one of the, one of the things that are really a good improvement on the real estate provision that we established is we now have a regular roster of all the licensed real estate licensees in Guam. So we set it out every week so that we give it to the principal broker, and under that list, they have to see all the downline, I mean, all the real estate people that work under them. In this case, then they will know, they look at it, and they will know who's the people or who's the salesperson that's not really active. And then they will tell our office, and we would then back and forth, try to reconcile their records to our records. And also, one of the things that's good with that is so that the people know, or the salespeople know that we are really monitoring them, that they, we want to make sure that every salesperson that's representing themselves outside know that they are licensed, so that the consumers are protected. And we also set up proposed amendments. The, our law, the real estate law is so old, I think it's like 30, 40 years old. And we're trying to do like some amendments so that we can be up to par with the national real estate laws. And I want to thank the chairman and the members of the commission because it's really a concerted effort among us, among them especially, that they give their, we did our assignment and our like due diligence so that we can see the, the normal or the, the right law, the right proposed law that we would like to, to submit to you, Senator Perez, you know, for consideration. So at least if we can have that, and then we can have it bring to the, brought to the legislature so that we can see if you can really improve the laws, the old laws of real estate on Guam. So the coming of the very unwellcome pandemic targeted activities of the commission, as you know. But as the situation becomes normal, the commission intends to resume business to continue to improve the real estate industry in Guam, to benefit the industry and most especially the consumers. So I sincerely thank you for the opportunity of being nominated again as one of the members of the Real Estate Commission. I thank you very much, Senator.
Thank you so much, Alice. Yeah, it has been a pleasure to really interact with you. You, your board is so proactive. And yeah, you do, you go beyond what what is expected of you, I think, in your position. And I think you're very lucky to have someone like you serving on that board, and, you know, waiting for a long time for the the board to become reimpaneled, so to speak, right? So, and, you know, we're just lucky that, you know, you're there with all that institutional knowledge and passion, I think, and commitment to improving, you know, the the industry and to protect our our consumers. So, you know, I'm very grateful, very grateful that you accepted the nomination, and look forward to working with you as well. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much, Senator.
But I guess just a couple of questions, you know, just for the record. Do you have any conflicts of interest?
No, I do not have any conflict of interest.
Okay, great, thanks. Yeah, I think it's very clear that what your strategy, your strategic plan is for the board. And again, thank you so much. And you have my support.
Thank you so much, Senator.
Okay, so now I'd like to also recognize Senator Tadicwi, who has joined us. Welcome. And I would like to open up questions or comments to my colleagues. Senator Brown, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Chairwoman. And certainly thank you to Ms. Sebastian Cruz for her continued interest, certainly in wanting to be a member of the Guam Real Estate Commission. I really don't have any questions for her. I think she elaborated during her presentation, and you've already asked the conflict issue. So I certainly appreciate her continued service, and it sounds like she's a positive contribution to this board, and certainly look forward to seeing their continued work with that. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Great. Thank you, Senator Brown. Senator Tonyada?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have any questions. Just like to thank Ms. Sebastian Cruz, too, for her continued work on the board, on the board, and for serving the people of Guam in that capacity. I think it's always great that people would always like to step up and, you know, contribute any way they can. And when they want to get reappointed again, you know, it just shows the passion that they have for, you know, what they want to do within our government for the people in our island. But thank you very much. I look forward for your confirmation moving forward, and you have my support.
Thank you very much, Senator.
Right. Thank you, Senator Ada. Senator Tadicwi? It looks like she stepped off for a little bit. I believe there are no other testimonies. Oh, Senator Tadicwi, yes, you're recognized.
I didn't realize my video was turned off. I'm trying to juggle a couple of things here and look at some of the documents that were provided for, for you, Ms. Cruz Sebastian. That's how, what did they, Alice, what did they call you for? Okay. No, got it, got it. It's okay. I was trying to look at some of the documents that were sent on your behalf from Rev. Tax, you know, the, that you wrote, excuse me. And also the testimony that was received by, by Chris Murphy, as well as Frank Pangolinan, I was trying to, trying to read that. I apologize for being late. I'm sorry I missed the other nominee, nominee. But, you know, coming into this position, Alice, it's, you know, it takes a lot of toll on, on your personal life. You know, you're doing your regular job, and then your family, you have your family to care for on top of that, and then doing something like this. So I thank you very much for contributing to the, our community in this manner, and especially in something such as real estate where it becomes very, it could be very controversial. There's, in fact, legislation that's out that I wanted to ask you with regards to your position on the board. And, and it's, but I don't have it up right now. And I was hoping my colleagues would talk more. So, but anyways, it's obvious, based on these documents from, from your other colleagues in the industry, Murphy, especially Christopher Murphy, Frank Pangolinan, you know, putting favor toward you. And so I'd just like to ask if there's anything, any of these laws, when, when they come up, do you try to attend the public hearings for them to provide your input when it comes to changing the current laws?
Right now, Senator, there's only one that's really out there, and that's the disclosure. But we actually, with the cooperation, much cooperation of the chairman and Mr. Pangolinan and all the rest of the members, we really proposed a change, a big change on the real estate law, and really hoping that it can be presented to our oversight chairman, and then that way it can be reviewed. And there's a lot that we were, were trying to change, really for the betterment of the industry, because our law has been so old, so, so old, and it just really needs to be addressed and to really be up to par to the other states, you know, if I may say that. It has been like, I think, 30, 40 years old. I'm sorry.
Do you have any suggestions on how, how we can move forward toward that?
Yes, Senator, we would like to, and it was already done as proposed. And so what we would like to do the next time we meet is to take like a time to meet with our oversight chairman so that we can present it. And I already mentioned it to Senator Perez, and she's very much welcoming to review it. And I'm just really very happy that she's, you know, so open to review our amendments or proposed amendments.
Yeah, but you have a great oversight chair, a very hardworking one, too, as well. So I have no doubt that whatever you put forward to her, she will take the time to to review it. So I thank you again so much for your contribution to the community and doing your best. And I ask you that, the only thing I ask you is that you keep safe, you know, and take time, take time for your family as well. And thank you again. Take care, Alice.
Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you, Senator Tadicwi. And again, thank you, Alice. I believe there are no other people here to provide testimony. I know you were waiting since this morning, but we're very glad that, very glad that you stayed on. And yeah, just continued the hard work that you're doing. I noticed that you were a chosen MAG Pro winner, and, you know, that says a lot, you know, being chosen amongst all government employees. They recognize your hard work and, and your commitment. So again, I'd like to thank you for, for accepting the nomination, and we look forward to your confirmation, hopefully in the upcoming session. And yeah, thank you for your time, and have a, have a great weekend. And we would like to, I guess, but being there, there are no other testimonies, your nomination hearing is duly heard. So, thank you again.
Thank you very much.
All right. So we are going to move on to the next item of the agenda. It's to hear testimony for the executive appointment of Attorney Stephen Carrera to serve as a member of the Guam Environmental Protection Agency Board of Directors. So the EPA Board of Directors consists of nine members that are appointed by the governor and approved or confirmed by the legislature. So the board meets every month. The meetings are open to the public. They serve also as appellate body. Any citizen who has concerns about any notice of violations or actions or decisions can request a hearing before the board. The board also appoints the administrator, who administers matters of the agency under the supervision of the board. The board also appoints a deputy administrator, who is not a member of the board, but has, shall not have the right to vote. And so they also, yeah, see a lot of the actions, any environmental actions that are being enforced. So notices were sent to Guam EPA and the EPA board members. We received no testimony at this time. So we'd like to invite the nominee himself, Stephen Carrera, to present his testimony. Attorney Carrera, you're recognized.
Okay. Well, good afternoon, and thank you for the opportunity to appear before the legislature. I'd like to thank the governor, too, for renominating me to the EPA board. This is my third go around at the board, and I'm very happy to have the opportunity to serve the community in, in some fashion by participation at the, with the EPA board. I think the agency is probably underappreciated in the community. There's a lot of great people working at EPA, and I really enjoy the, my interaction with, with the various staff members and our participation at the board meetings, trying to provide overall guidance and support to the administration. I noticed Conchita is here to participate, and I've always enjoyed, I mean, her depth and knowledge on environmental issues is very impressive, and her love for the community is, well, unparalleled. So, and that permeates throughout the agency, which is why, one reason why I like to continue to participate. I've worked for NOAA, the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, for many years and before coming out this way. I've also worked for the Palau Environmental Protection Board, because I was at the Attorney General's Office there. So I'm familiar, been out in the region for over 20 some years. Really like it out here, and I'm happy to contribute in some small way to the community. And that's all I have to say. So if you have any questions or whatever, happy to answer.
All right. Well, thank you so much, Stephen, for your acceptance. I was just pointed, something was pointed out to me, that your nomination packet, it mentions, it assigns you, there's been a misprint or a mis, everything else on the packet says the Guam EPA Board, but position of appointment says the Guam Educational Telecommunications Court.
Oh.
So we may, we have to, you know, request an update. Hopefully, it's, you were meant to be on the board and not, I mean, I imagine you're being renominated. That's what it says in most of the application, at one area on the information. So we will request the, any updates or changes. So I guess barring any changes, we'll continue with the, your hearing to be on the board of Guam EPA. So yes, thank you for sharing that you have a history with working on environmental issues. And you were based in Palau for some time as, I believe, as an attorney general or assistant attorney general, is that correct?
For both, yes. I was assistant attorney general, then became an attorney general. And that was for five years, four years, and then I lived down there another year after.
Okay. And did you have to deal with a lot of environmental issues as an attorney general in Palau?
Well, yeah, we were a small office, so all the attorneys, you know, everybody had to pick up where they can. And, you know, the, the Environmental Quality Protection Board was, you know, again, it was, you know, kind of a core group of people who were out to try and to do what was right, and it was our role to, to support them. You know, and there was always issues, not real big as you have in an industrial place, but issues of protecting mangroves and things like that, and people, you know, hunting doves below and out of season. So there were a lot of issues that we had to deal with.
Okay. And were you able to apply any of that to Guam? So things that you picked up along the way, how has that influenced your, I guess, your view on, on environmental protections?
Well, I, I, I think I, you just, from my personal perspective, you, you just try to bring all your life factors in, into your consideration of what's going on, taking into account people's backgrounds and cultural things and a lot, because a lot of our decisions relate to fines that are issued, and, you know, we have to hear. And you, you just bring that perspective, and I think that's been helpful in, in my, my role at Guam EPA.
So were there any decisions on the board that you agreed with, or I'm sorry, disagreed with, that the board, the other board members, yeah, I guess basically, how do you deal with conflict or disagreement? Should, you know, for instance, if the board chooses to do one thing, but you decide, or you're, you're, you have a dissenting?
Well, I mean, you had, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to speak over you. But you advocate your point, and you try to bring your board members around to your position, and sometimes things don't go your way, but you know, you vote your conscience.
Were there any instances that you can recall during your membership?
No, I think the board has been pretty much unanimous. I don't think, I don't recall any that, that come to mind, that it got contentious at the board.
Okay. So what do you think are the challenges for Guam EPA, and how do you see your membership as contributing to addressing those challenges?
Well, as we spoke in our conversation, you know, and it ties into the solid waste argument, the landfill is filling up faster than anybody ever anticipated. I mean, from an EPA solid waste perspective, I really think we need to focus on reduce, reuse, and recycle. You know, how the agencies work together to do that, it's a big question, and we all try to do our part to make that happen.
Okay.
One issue coming up now before the board is the Northern Aquifer. There's a decision to be made, what map to adopt. We're looking at that right now. That's a big decision because- that's a big decision because uh, we need to protect the Northern Aquifer and and what's the best way to do to do that?
So what do you, what is your thought about that? Which of the maps or how do you make that decision? Um, yeah, do you, do you prefer one map over another?
Uh, yes, and but since it's a pending matter, uh, I don't know if I I should express my opinions on it, uh, since it it's still before the board. Uh, but I think the agency uh, has put together, you know, a strong recommendation.
Uh, can you, uh, what is that recommendation? If you can share with the audience?
Uh, I I forget which map it was and we're we're going to deal with this at the next meeting. I guess it's the one that it it lessens the lot size outside of the zone, but it maintains it for the part inside the zone, uh, which is most sensitive. So it, there was a uh, there were pluses and minuses to it. I I forget which map, uh, the specific names of the maps. But the one that uh, Director Beer, uh, not Director, Brian Bearden was uh, said that was the map followed by the uh, that was uh, prepared by the hydrology department uh, was the better map to follow, I guess was his recommendation.
Okay, hydrology department, which you mean you're talking about weary or which hydrology?
Yes, uh, well, I I I'm sorry, I I don't want to misspeak off the top of my head, but it was the one, yeah, I I can't comment on it, you know, because I don't have the the paperwork in front of me, uh.
Okay. Uh, yeah, that's pretty critical. Uh, the maps are very important. Um, yeah, so because I know there's a map, the the age, like there was different maps that were produced in time. Um, you recall if it was the older map or the newer map?
I believe it was the older map that uh, was I I guess there were, at some point, they started referencing a newer map that was less accurate or didn't contain the scientific background of the older map.
Okay. Okay. All right. Thanks. Um, and then uh, yeah, it's interesting. We, you know, we did have um, the confirm, uh, the nomination hearing, confirmation hearing for uh, Guam Solid Waste Board Member. And the issue came up with the incineration. Um, what is your uh, view about incineration?
I mean, my personal view is probably it's something that needs to be looked at. Uh, I know other countries do it in a very organized fashion and how to go about doing that. We need to look at it, but I I we just can't seem to keep burying it. Uh, so unless we reduce and or recycle more, uh, I I think at some point it's going to have to be considered.
Okay. Uh, so what are, what are some other challenges that the um, the board is addressing that um, in the near future? What are some of the issues? So you mentioned the map, uh, landfill. Is there any, any other uh, concerns or environmental issues that are?
Well, I think the agency, I mean, I, it's always looking for resources and and people. Uh, like I said, I I think the world of the people at the uh, agency. Uh, I our role, I feel, is to s- support them as best we can and try to help them uh, in any way we can.
Okay. Um, okay. So I guess another question is, um, what, I guess, what drives you to continue to serve on the board?
Uh, I'm a believer in public service and I think it's it's a great board to be a part of. It's just a a way of, you know, to contribute back to the community.
And um, okay, I guess so. Couple, couple more questions. So um, do you have any conflicts of interest?
Uh, well, I do work for IPNE as well. Uh, this, uh, we operate the Shell Station, so I when, we haven't had any issues that come up, but uh, if they do come up, I will certainly recuse myself.
Okay. And as far as your attendance uh, in the meetings, uh, how would you rate yourself uh, as far as attendance?
I don't think I've missed a meeting. Uh, even when I was on leave, I guess when uh, in December, we had a meeting. I was in the stateside and I participated. It was in the middle of the night. But I was able to make it. So I think my attendance record was pretty good and if they always uh, always make sure that it, if there's a lot of quorum on there, but I don't think I've I've missed a meeting.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you, Stephen, for um, your your answers and um, we do uh, look forward to um, yeah, I guess seeing that the board is uh, fully, fully filled and um, and for your continued service. So thank you for accepting the nomination.
Thank you.
And so now at this point, I would like to open the floor to my colleagues, Senator Brown.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and certainly thank you to Attorney Carrera for um, wanting to continue on with his work in serving Guam EPA. And he did recognize certainly a challenge that has existed with the agency. Since I was there back in the day with Conchita Titano, and there's only a few, very few members of Guam EPA that are still there that uh, we all started with. Um, is is a lack of personnel resources because the agency really has not grown in the thirty years since I first started there in nineteen ninety-one. Um, I know we would like to look at seeing how many, how much more resource certainly we as a legislature can put in place to address since most of the operations for Guam EPA historically and continues to be paid for by the federal government. Um, and yet, you know, a lot of the challenges that you had mentioned with regards to our environmental issues, particularly with regards to Northern Guam uh, and what we need to do to take care of our 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 waterlands and other resources there. Um, what are, what are your thoughts on that as a board member? I'm sure you'll advocate for it, but what what's your view of it? Because the agency pretty much has not grown. I mean, when I was there, we maybe had fifty-one or fifty-two personnel. The agency numbers aren't much different from them. That included myself and the administrators. So what are your thoughts on that and advocating to get more personnel resources to help oversee the continued growth and development and adverse impact to our environment?
Oh, well, I mean, I I don't know what I could, can do to help, but uh, I I just recognize it as a need. Uh, I know everybody there works real hard and, you know, and covers a lot of ground and I think it's something we have to expand and I I just don't know how we go about recruiting and developing uh, those skills. The people, you you gotta have a certain dedication and want to continue with it. And like I said, I mean, through lobbying, trying to support the people, uh, you know, the staff and their decisions uh, is is what little I could do, uh, and work with the administrator and and, you know, seeking uh, support from the uh, executive branch and the legislature.
Well, as a board member, what do you foresee? Maybe the concerns if EPA doesn't expand its uh, capacity to absorb all the issues, the environmental issues that are happening in the island that essentially EPA regulates because it has far reaching authorities, but if it doesn't have the resources out there to enforce uh, the laws and the authorities that it has, that that pretty much puts us solid at disadvantage. So certainly as a board member, while I realize you're not the one who's going to be, you know, uh, being able to yourself get the funds you need directly to to hire additional resources. What are you advocating for as a board member?
Uh, well, I mean, I think one, if we don't protect the, do what we can to protect the environment, eventually factors will overwhelm us, uh, like global warming, I mean, or climate change. I mean, it it's coming. Some prefer to put their heads in the ground and ignore it and just say it's going to happen, but uh, we've just got to keep educating the people and fighting the fight. I I I don't know what specifically more we could do than that, but uh, I think we, getting people aware of the problem is the first step and and getting people to address it. Uh, taking care of, you know, the the trash issues around and disposals around wells and things to protect the aquifer. I mean, it just keeps coming up and multiplying and you've just got to be vigilant and when, when we issue a notice of violation, you know, we need to to back the agencies uh, where they're correct in their opinion, whether uh, in the facts, if they're not correct, then, you know, what, you know, we should challenge that, but uh, I, it basically, as a board member, I see the opportunity to give the board, uh, the EPA uh, staff the backbone to do what they need, not the backbone, but the support to do what they need to do, to make it happen. Some boards will, uh, I understand will more lax in their approach. I think the current board is uh, pretty stringent in in enforcement and supporting enforcement. And mind you, we're just laypeople trying to help out. We're not, I I don't pretend to be an expert in environmental issues, but I do have a concern uh, and a care and and do my best to support it, to support the experts.
Well, Attorney Carrera, again, I I appreciate your your interest in serving in the board and uh, it's always impressive to have a perfect attendance record because in some boards and commissions, it's sometimes occasionally a challenge to get enough members together to have a quorum. So I I certainly will be supportive of your nomination. I certainly wish you well in your continued the service to the people at Guam. Uh, with that, thank you very much, Madam Chair, for the opportunity to be able to ask questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Senator Tadegui, do you have any comments or questions for the nominee?
Oh, Senator Ada is not, okay. So thank you so much and and thank you for letting me uh, know that it is, we are at the right uh, public hearing. It is EPA and not uh, K G T F. Looking at his uh, uh, application, but anyway, so Steve, thank you so much for uh, wanting to continue. This will be your, how many terms now have you served on this?
This will be my third term.
Your third term and each term is what, uh, two years?
I think it's longer, to tell you the truth. Uh, I think I'm in this holdover status now, so it's hard for me to tell how many, how many years it was. And I think it was a holdover last time too, so it continued for a little bit longer.
So if I, if I'm, I think it's a, maybe I'm not mistaken, eh? Anyways, um, well, thank you. This is your third time and this will be your third time sitting in front of the legislature seeking for um, it's a three-year term. So you have now, uh, this will be your third time serving. So you've served six years in in this uh, as a board member for EPA. Uh, so thank you so much for doing that. So you have a wealth of knowledge, at least different, definitely experience um, when it comes to what's been going on for the last six years. Um, and I I'd like your opinion on how you feel about the um, the revolving recycling fund and the um, you know, how other agencies are trying to dip their hands in the cookie jar and take away from uh, this fund that's obviously needed with EPA, with all their projects or potential projects that they have. Uh, can you tell me your 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 take on this and uh, what involvement have you had with regards to this?
Uh, well, I I guess early on, uh, there were a- attempts, obviously money is short supply, uh, and then high demand. Uh, the the recycling fund has always been a target uh, of of or identified as a source of funds. Uh, recent, uh, several years back, we passed uh, legis, uh, all regulations to try to uh, put some structure around that. Uh, I understand in in the last go around, there there was some money, uh, money that was directed to another program. Uh, and we were charged with making sure that those funds were spent uh, accordingly and we will fulfill that role. Uh, I think the programs, uh, from what I've seen, uh, are are actually good programs. So I think overall it's a good thing, but we need to be judicious in how we use the recycling fund.
Um, so with with regards to that, I'm sure that e- as an attorney, you definitely have a an opinion that that's uh, well received by the board and um, your your opinion probably does, especially when it comes to reality and, but um, have you ever been uh, had a decision that you did not agree with, with the administration and uh, made that um, voiced that opinion?
I, well, I mean, we've had votes at the, I I can't recall a vote, you know, something that's come down where we've had that type of dissension or felt that we need to do things, something that uh, we didn't feel that was the right thing to do.
Hmm. And and Attorney Carrera, um, what is your um, strength that you think you bring to to EPA?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
And what strength do you think you believe can contribute to EPA on the board? Your strength?
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, like I said, I don't think any of us are experts uh, in environmental issues. I think we bring our own common sense and practical realities and I think by providing good, solid judgment or, you know, advice to the administrator and and the members of the staff is how we do our jobs. I don't think it's uh, I, we're not there to second guess them, but just to help provide them overall, you know, uh, support and uh, in doing their jobs.
So um, well, I appreciate saying common sense because they say, there's a saying that common sense is most uncommon. So I'm glad you you brought that up because sometimes it's just common sense and and you need to push that agenda. So I appreciate, you know, you you mentioning that. Well, I thank you so much uh, for serving again for a third term, wanting to serve another three years. And uh, again, I I like Senator Brown, I appreciate the fact that you're you're showing up to these meetings, which is very, very important. Taking time out of your family and your personal life to do this for the people of Guam, it's very much appreciated. Thank you so much, Madam Chair, for the opportunity. And again, Stephen, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Tadegui. And um, again, yes, thank you, uh, Attorney Carrera, for your commitment to serve on the board, uh, which is so important for uh, continuing the enforcement of our our laws and protecting our environment. And um, yeah, we uh, are looking forward to, you know, your contributions um, to help to continue this this tradition and um, yeah, thank you for taking the time out of your your professional life uh, to to be there at every every month and to help uh, you know, with the dialogue and discussion uh, that takes place with the very important issues. Yeah, I'm very interested in this map, the map of the Northern Guam's aquifer map. That's very critical. And I'll be looking very closely at that in addition to trying to figure out ways on the recycling and and zero waste um, efforts. So thank you for your time and um, we do appreciate your commitment uh, to serve on the board. So um, your confirmation hearing is duly heard. Um, it is now two thirty-eight and um, have a great weekend. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So um, now to the last item of the agenda of this public hearing. Uh, it's to hear testimony regarding bill number one forty-nine dash thirty-six COR sponsored by myself. It's an act to adopt the rules and regulations for the underground storage tank as transmitted by the Guam Environmental Protection Agency. The purpose of this bill is to approve the Guam EPA Underground Storage Tank Rules and Regulations, um, which were enabled by Title Ten, Chapter Seventy-Six, Article One. The rules and regs being presented to the committee today have been developed through the triple A process. The rules and regs have been approved by the US EPA Office of Underground Storage Tanks and US EPA Region Nine. It was publicly heard by Guam EPA with no significant comments or questions. It was adopted by the board under Resolution Number nineteen dash zero zero two. It was approved by the Attorney General of Guam, approved by the Governor of Guam and received and is now received by the legislature for adoption. The Underground Storage Tank Program was established and codified under Chapter Seventy-Six, Title Ten, Guam Code Annotated in nineteen eighty-nine. Um, this is the first of its existence, which is an important regulatory achievement with input and guidance from US EPA as part of Riqua I, subtitle I, that was developed nationally in response to spills of petroleum into the environment. These rules and regs are required by Chapter Seventy-Six, Title Ten, GCA, which states one of the purposes is to enact and establish regulations, guidelines, standards and policies that ensure consistent cleanup of regulated substances and mitigation of the damage they cause. By adopting these rules, it will ensure that Guam Guam's rules are as stringent as those with the federal government. Uh, this will affect primary owners of private, government, federal and commercial properties. Uh, there are currently two hundred and eighty-two underground storage tanks, uh, many of them above our Northern Guamland's aquifer. And these regulations, should they be adopted, will include uh many of them above our Northern Guaman's aquifer, and these regulations, should they be adopted, will include greater measures to approve design leakage, construction, operation of underground storage tanks. It ensures containment to prevent leakage into our precious Northern Guaman's aquifer. It authorizes cleanups and fines, creates a process for abandoned underground storage tanks. Guam EPA will use these rules and regs as an enforcement tool to prevent release of regulated items into the ground, thus affecting our water resources and surrounding environment. Um, so these rules and regs will monitor everything from design, construction, installation, training, permits, operating, detection, response, actions and enforcement. So notices were sent to Guam EPA and the board. So at this time, we did not receive a fiscal note, but within the triple-A process, there is a economic impact statement that is submitted with the package. Um, and so it states that Guam Guam EPA that the that reiterated that these proposed rules and regs are administrative in nature and will have little to no adverse financial impacts on the public and private entities since U S T owners and operators have been subject to the fee that are associated with the federal regulations under forty uh CFR Part Two Eighty and Public Law Thirty dash Thirty-Six. Uh, it states that there is also no monetary cost or benefits to the agency or other regulatory agencies associated with the proposed rules and regulations. Um in this statement, in addition, the US, it states the U S T regulations may create negative and positive employment impacts, which can include both reductions in employment to reduce costs and increases in employment or increases in employment to ensure implementation of regulatory provisions. The regulation may affect public spending related to cleanup of contaminated sites. So at this time, we have a presentation um by uh Vince Perara from Guam EPA, I believe. Uh, he has a PowerPoint presentation that he will present, and we do have other members of Guam EPA uh in case there are any questions. Uh, we have Conchita Titano, uh Don Kanata, Michael O'Malley from Guam EPA. So thank you for being here, Vince, uh to present this. Uh, I understand you put a lot of work. Um, you know, these, this is like the the final the final part of all the work that you've been doing. And so I do appreciate all the hard work that uh Guam EPA has done, you have done, uh and your your team has done to put this together. So without further ado, I I do want to recognize you uh for this presentation. Sorry, um you're still muted. If you can unmute yourself.
Yes.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Senators and stakeholders. My name is Vincent J. Perara, and I work for Guam Environmental Protection Agency, Air and Land Division, hazardous waste program. I'm here today with Ms. Meveni Hasida, who will present a PowerPoint presentation on the Underground Storage Tanks Rules and Regulations. The U C rules and regulation were properly adopted pursuant to law when the Thirty-Fifth Legislature allowed the prerequisite time period to lapse without any action. We would like to ask if we could refrain from asking any question until the end of the slides. Madam Chair, I present Ms. Meveni Hasida to do the presentation.
Hi, half a day. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, um, Senators and other attendees in this public hearing for this afternoon. I am Meveni Hasida, and I'll be the one uh presenting the PowerPoint presentation today. So to begin the presentation, um, it is the Guam Environmental Protection Agency, Title Twenty-two, Division Ten, Chapter Fifty, the Underground Storage Tank Regulations. Um, this presentation is today for June eighteen, twenty twenty-one. Uh, next slide. This is the agenda. We have the Administrative Adjudication Law, um, the Guam Underground Storage Tank, which is the U S T, the Guam U S T statutes, the amended Guam U S T regulations. We have a slide regarding the state program approval, which is known as the SPA, and the federal regulation implementation deadlines from U S E P A. And as mentioned earlier, questions and any discussion at the end of the presentation. Next slide. Here we have a flow chart on what we did to follow the rulemaking process for the Underground Storage Tank Rules and Regulation. Next slide. So the public hearing Thirty-five G L dash twenty dash twenty-three forty-one um was the proposed Underground Storage Tank Rules and Regulations. We believe that these rules and regulations to be in effect. As mentioned again at the beginning of the start of this hearing, the proposed U S T rules and regulations was transmitted to the Speaker of the Thirty-Fifth Guam Legislature on October twenty-seven, twenty twenty. A virtual legislative public hearing was held December four, twenty twenty. Pursuant to forty-five one oh five, if after forty-five calendar days, the legislature has not expressly approved or rejected such action or any part thereof by a resolution duly adopted or by eleven members of the legislature, such action or any part thereof not expressly rejected shall be deemed to be approved. So as of April five, twenty nineteen, the powers and duties vested in the agency pursuant to Ten G C A forty-five one oh five included the implementation of forty-five G C A Chapter Seventy-Six, which is Public Law Thirty-five zero zero six. And a letter to the Honorable Therese M. Terlahe, Speaker of the Thirty-Six Guam Legislature, dated May nineteen, twenty twenty-one, was transmitted advising her that the U S T rules and regulations are deemed approved on December eleven, twenty twenty. Next slide. So we'll go through swiftly. The these are the letters and documents that were submitted as part of the rulemaking process. We have the fact sheet of the U S T rules and regulations. Next slide. We have the letter to the Honorable Therese M. Terlahe, Speaker of the Thirty-Six Guam Legislature, that was dated May nineteen, twenty twenty-one. Next slide, please. Uh, this is the U S T resolution from when it was presented to the board on the U S T rules and regulations. This is, they signed it December twelve, twenty nineteen. Next slide. This is the letter from the Attorney General of Guam. It was received October nine, twenty twenty. Next slide. This is the governor's letter that approved the U S T rules and regulations into policy. This was received October twenty-two, twenty twenty. Next slide, please. Here is a Google map of our U S T universe. Next slide. So the U S Ts on Guam, there are two hundred and eighty-two permitted U S Ts. The primary owners consist of private, commercial, federal and local government. And as you saw on the Google map, it's distributed on the island above Guam Water Protections, the zone shoreline and residential villages. Next slide. So why do we need the regulation? We implement enabling statutes. Our statutes are currently the Title Ten Guam Code Annotated, Chapter Seventy-Six, Article One. Regulations are structured and used as a stringent enforcement tool. Um, it increases prevention to decrease releases and as our agency mission to protect the environment. We also meet Energy Policy Act provisions from U S E P A so that we can maintain federal grant funding. Next slide. Here are the articles that are on in the Guam U S T regulations. There are thirteen articles. Next slide. And with the U S T rules and regulations, we're, we want to achieve state program approval, which is the SPA. So right now Guam is not a SPA state, therefore owners and operators of U S Ts must comply with both Guam and EPA's U S T requirements. SPA approval will result with compliance with state program only. And Guam EPA's proposed U S U S T regulations has been reviewed by Ms. Elizabeth McDermott, who is with the Regulation Development and State Program Approval, U S E P A ousted. Uh, ousted the Office of Underground Storage Tanks. Next slide. So Article One, it covers the scope and installation requirements for partially excluded U S T systems, the applicability to U S T systems and the definitions. Next slide. Here is a photo of the most common U S T system. Uh, typical U S T system would be uh a gas station. And you can see at the bottom of the photo, you have the U S T, the tank itself underground. Next slide. Other U S T systems, they consist of emergency generator tanks. We have airport hydrant fuel distribution systems, field constructed U S T systems and flow-through tank systems, also known as um O W S, oil-water separators. Next slide. Article Two, it covers the U S T systems, design, construction and installation. We have tanks and piping, installer certification, under dispenser containment and upgrades. Next slide. Here are photos of the U S Ts. Some are steel, some are fiberglass. So this is before they go underground, before they're installed. Next slide. We have piping. Um, it's required to have double-wall piping. Next slide. Secondary containment, new or replaced tanks and piping must have secondary containment. So this is a photo of a U S T that is exposed. You could see the primary wall and the secondary wall. Next slide. Under dispenser containment, each new dispenser must have under dispenser containment, also known as U D C. U D C must be liquid tight and allow for visual inspection or be continuously monitored for leaks. Next slide. We have Article Three, it's composed, covers the general operating requirements. So there's still an overfill control, notification, reporting and record keeping, U S T systems testing and inspections. Next slide. U S T inspection tools. Um, there are challenges. For example, if you see in the top right of the photo, um, the manhole cover or lid is heavy when we do inspections. Next slide. There's a spill prevention equipment. On the left side of the photo, you, those are known as spill buckets. That's where the fuel delivery truck dispenses the fuel into, on the right, we have a submersible pit. Next slide. Overfill prevention equipment, it must be periodically tested. Flow restrictors and vent lines or ball floats are no longer allowed in new or replaced U S T systems. Again, ball floats are not allowed anymore. Next slide. Article Four, it covers release detection, methods of release detection or R D for tanks and piping. There's record keeping, testing, uh, release detection equipment. Next slide. Article Five, release reporting, investigation confirmation. This covers reporting suspected release, investigating releases and cleanup of spill and overfill. Here, this photo, it has a picture of the automatic tank gauge system, which monitors the underground tanks. Next slide. Article Six is composed of release response action. Following verbal notification of suspected release, owners and operators must follow up with a written notice within three business days. Uh, it also covers corrective action and notification. Next slide. Article Seven, it covers auto-service U S T systems and closure. We have temporary closure, permanent close, permanent closure and site assessment. Next slide. Closure and change in service. So for temporary closure requirements, you have three months to twelve months. And then permanent closure is removed when it, the U S T is removed from the ground completely. That's the tank and the piping, whole system. Next slide, please. Article Eight, it covers financial responsibility. There, it explains the definition of terms and demonstrate financial responsibility for taking corrective action or compensation. Next slide. Article Nine is the lender liability. It covers the ownership of U S T systems and liability and management of U S T systems. Next slide. Article Ten, this is on operator training. So it's required, um, there are three classes of operators. There's Class A, Class B and Class C. Uh, training is required and there is retraining and documentation covered in these classes. Next slide. Article Twelve, this covers permits and variances. So the U S T required permits to install, to operate, to modify, to close and to change an ownership or operator. So for a permit, there are permit fees and there are permit conditions. Next slide. The last article, Article Thirteen, is on enforcement. It covers the purpose, the field citation and delivery deposit and acceptance provision. Next slide. Uh, field citations, these are examples of how we conduct our field citation or our inspections and if a field citation is issued. Next slide. This is from U S E P A, the federal implementation timeframes when it was given twenty fifteen for the U S T requirements to be met. Um, the dates on month and year is listed on this timeframe. Next slide, please. And that ends the presentation. Thank you.
All right, thank you for that presentation. Um, there are just, um, yeah, the reason I, we, it was uh submitted to the legislature last term uh through the triple-A process, the uh it was, it was those rules and regs, so at that time, we did not um put it in a bill form. And uh there were, the legislature follows the the ninety days and there was insufficient time for it to to lapse into law and uh and one legislature cannot bind another. So that's one of the processes that we're following. Um, so that's why it would have to be resubmitted. That's why we're here today, having the second public hearing on this. But I I don't, I don't want to detract from the importance of this um, you know, achievement. This is an important achievement for Guam EPA. Um, but as you mentioned before that, U S T, um, so prior to adoption, U S, you, um, Underground Storage Tank would have to comply with uh U S uh rules and regulations. Is that correct?
Uh, ma'am, that's correct. Uh, our rules and regulations have to be as stringent as the federal regulations.
Okay, and so so as far as the practical effect of U S uh Guam EPA adopting its rules and regs, is there a practical effect to now Guam EPA adopting these rules and regs?
I'm not quite sure what you mean by practical effect.
Uh, to, I guess, um, gas stations, I mean, they they had to follow the CFR, appropriate CFRs, correct?
Well, ma'am, if the regulation, Guam EPA's regulation is is passed and approved, uh, the local gas station would have to follow our regulation. But in the event that EPA But in the event that EPA comes out here to do inspection, if we haven't gotten a spa. U S E P A would use their federal regulation to conduct an inspection, not our regulation.
Okay, so.
But if, so, so if spa is approved for Guam. U S E P A inspector who comes out here to Ireland will use our regulation to conduct their inspection.
Okay.
That's the difference.
So we have, Kunchita, did you want to weigh in on that one? So as far as U S E P A enforcement versus Guam P enforcement? Is there a practical difference, Kunchita?
Well, well, the practice is exactly what, what Vince mentioned. Uh they would. The benefit, really, the benefit here is that the regulated community. Will be following one set of regulations and standards, and that would be Guam's instead of having to comply with both.
Okay. Um so, so um in your test, in the testimony that was provided, it, it is as stringent. Uh but so is, is there differences between the U S E P A then and Guam's? Or what, what are the differences?
Vince, I think, you know, I know we have a listing there that, that delineates the, the differences. I mean, that's the thing about. When we did the regulations, we already knew we were going towards authorization or state program approval. And to get state program approval, you have to be, you have to be at least consistent with the federal requirements. You cannot be less stringent and, and our, and our federal grants depend on this, okay? And aside from that, it's just the federal government won't, won't, won't tolerate it. They, they will come in and do their own enforcement action. So we have to be at a minimum consistent with it, or we can be more stringent or broader in scope. And I believe that fact, there should be a fact sheet that delineates those differences. Vince, did you want to like call out a few of those?
Yeah, I didn't see that in the presentation. Hope you can maybe um provide.
We definitely can, can provide that. And Senator, you know, we, we are going through this and I, and I, and I know. Um I, I'm listening in about, you know, the validity of the regulations, but. I would like to add this at the very beginning because we, we were advised to, to, to stress this, which is. The position of Guam, the Guam Environmental Protection Agency regarding this bill is this. Guam E P A has consulted Assistant Attorney General, uh Kristen Finney from the Office of the Attorney General of Guam. We've consulted the governor's legal counsel, Sofia Diaz, and we have consulted the Guam compiler of laws. Jerry Sepeda. And based on these con- consultations, it is the agency's position. That the U S T regulations were properly adopted pursuant to law. And that the agency has already begun enforcement actions. It is also our understanding through consultation with the compiler's office. That they intend to already include them in the upcoming updates to the G A R. The agency is concerned that any ambiguity regarding the validity. Of our U S T regulations might undermine our enforcement activities. Now, you know, we're caught in the middle of this because we are very responsive. Uh uh Madam Chair to the legislature. And so we're here presenting it and it, it causes a bit confusion with us because. We have groups of people saying legal, uh, legal opinions, if you will, consultations that have told us that these are already in place. But we will go through this with you and, 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 um, and present as such, but the agency's position is we will proceed. With the regulations as if, that they're essentially in effect.
Noted, yes, uh, you know, your, your, um, your, uh. I guess stance is noted, and I think we're all here to ensure that um. The enforcement capability of Guam is on stable ground. So that's why we're here today. And I, that's why it was been introduced. So I think we have the same goals in mind.
Thank, thank you, thank you. Thank you, Senator. And, and, and the administrator, it looks like the administrator is, is also present. Uh Walter?
Yes, so I, I need to apologize, I've been fighting this uh. This throat issue that I have. Um so what Kunchita stated is correct. But we also know that the legislature has it into their authority to, to put forth any regs uh when they want to. Uh which is why we're continuing to, to move forward with this. Our hope, since everything that we've presented was presented back uh in twenty twenty. That, that there's no change to these regulations. Um we know you have the authority to do that, but that, that is our hope. That they still does is, um because it's already been discussed with our federal counterparts. Um it's kind of been, already been put forth in front of the commercial and industrial um communities. Um during the previous uh meetings with stakeholders. You know, these things were discussed or outlined, outlined out and no one, there was no significant comments that uh occurred. So we truly believe these are the best regulations that can be covered for Guam.
Okay, yes, thank you for that testimony, uh Administrator. Uh yes, uh the intention is to move forward with the rules and regs as proffered through the triple A process. And uh we do want to support all the efforts um that Guam P has done. You know, we know how hard it is to get through a triple A process. And you've done that twice in the past two years, so congratulate yourself for doing that. Uh and these are huge, huge regulatory achievements, so I do want to congratulate you on that. And we're here to make sure that um we see it through. Um so thank you for that testimony. Um are there anyone else here to provide testimony on um Bill one forty-nine? Okay, so I'd like to open up the floor to my colleagues, Senator Brown.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I certainly appreciate the presentation, but I see the concern that's coming from both sides, desire to. Want to ensure that these regulations are in place, but the question is to the process and so. If I could ask Guam E P A to elaborate further on how they believe the timelines were met with regards to the adoption of these um. Rules and regulations because no formal action was completed by the legislature during the last legislature. And then if, if they do, you don't have to tell us if you have on, who is involved in any ongoing enforcement, but do you have ongoing enforcement? Miss Titan, oh, you mentioned might be jeopardized if we were to simply go through the process of formally adopting this on, on the floor. At this time, uh is there, you've mentioned there is current enforcement action that EPA was already taking that might be affected by that? With the view that the legislature passes this version now, which I assume is a, a mirror. Version of what was previously passed, uh that that could affect any current enforcement that the agency is pursuing.
Okay, hold on, let me, there we go. I do not have that information with me and I will rely on, on staff uh on this, but the, the. The statement that I've read essentially is coming from the advice that we're getting from our legal counsel. And so it's just to further emphasize the importance of having these, I mean. Of these regulations being passed and that's. I mean, that's where we were since December, Senator.
Oh, I think it's a question of getting clarification because, I mean, the Oversight Chair has a concern that perhaps that did, that process was not. Properly executed and I'm assuming that is why she's moved forward and reintroducing it. Uh to make sure formally from her perspective, it's certainly from the legislature's perspective that indeed. Uh you know, these rules and regs are being put in place so that that mechanism is there for Guam E P A to execute it, so.
Well, here's the thing.
Where's the conflict coming from that we're on two separate terms?
Well, the conflict is this, I mean, we're, we have yet to hear from the legislature to explain why, why they believe that. That these need to be reintroduced and we have repeatedly asked that. We have letters requesting for information and we have not. Have that. So this is what led to the letter that came out to the Speaker of the Legislature advising her. That after discussions between our Assistant Attorney General. And legal counsel for the legislature, it during the earlier part of this year. The resolution was, we still don't know and we have asked repeatedly, why does the legislature believe this? I mean, the regulations claim, you know, state forty-five days and if the, these things, if the regulations from the time they are filed are. And, and they're heard and they're not, there, no action is done within forty-five days, which we calculate to be December eleventh, then they're approved by default. And so, you know, we took the side, we, we aired on the side of caution and we asked. And, and when we asked, the response was, well. It was from the last legislature. I said, yeah, but what, what are the legal merits? And we, and we tried to resolve this as best possible. So then we went on and we asked. We asked clarification from the Attorney General's Office and the position still remains the same. And so we asked, I mean, aside from the governor's legal counsel, we checked with the, with Guam's compiler of laws. And their, their reading is the same. So again, as our, as our administrator, Walter Leon Guerrero pointed out, you know. The legislature calls for public hearing, we will participate. And we will, will, we will give it our best, but we have to, we had to add the same token. Explain, you know, the information, the legal information that we received. So. I, I don't know how much more to explain, Senator Brown. I just, I can just tell you that. The agency has done so much to try to work with the legislature. We have sent our assistant, uh the Assistant Attorney General assigned to the agency to work with your legal, with the legislative, legislative legal counsel. And we have not received. Anything legally explaining why, why the, the rules were not in effect. In fact, it's all, it's to the contrary.
Yeah, if I may, I have been in discussions with the administrator and um I did explain the position and um. Yeah, I don't want to go into the full out of it, but if, you know, there, there is a difference of opinion. And we're going this route just to formalize and ensure. That there, the process, because the legislature has its own process. And really, the intention is to ensure that. Um it is formalized through the process that the legislature endorses. So it involves, um, yeah, acceptance of that process. So we did have conversation early on in the, it's the very beginning of this term. So if you have any questions, please talk to, talk to the administrator and uh. You know, they, they would know that um there has been conversations. Um it wasn't submitted, it wasn't submitted until May this year. Uh but that, that is one of the issues.
Senator, would you mind if I interject again? So again, um, you know, I, I try to. It's, this is Walter, Walter, Minister, oh gee, I'm sorry.
This is Senator Brown's time. So Senator Brown, do you have anything for the?
Well, Madam Chair, I, I just think the issue needs to get clarified. I mean, you know, if, if the, if they're written opinions by the Attorney General's Office. Or whatever the case may be, I think it would be good to see that and include it on the record. Um if we could have that provided. I mean, I understand the triple A process. I mean, maybe legislatively, we might want to extend it. I mean, I don't like default to approve provisions in law because I, I think it prevents that opportunity to. To have additional public review on public policy that's implemented, not just at Guam E P A, but within, within the government of Guam and throughout the government of Guam. Um so I think it would just be good to get that clarified. I mean, if there, if there are ongoing cases of enforcement. That Guam E P A believes would be affected, they don't need to tell us who it is, but perhaps the substance of what it is. Uh if we were to readdress, because I'm assuming this, this legislation is a mirror image of what uh was introduced. And moved forward in, in the previous uh, previous year of twenty twenty. Uh so it'd be good to, to find out that and get this issue clarified. I'm sure, Madam Chair, you have your respective view as to why. You feel it's necessary, but I, I just think moving forward publicly, it would be important. Uh to have the issue clarified so that we don't jeopardize any ongoing enforcement and, and at least get it clarified collectively for everyone. Uh so that we can make sure that the regulations, had they already been in place or will be in place, or however we're going to go about it. Uh we can have that question answered uh for collectively the rest of the body and, and for the public. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Alright, thank you, Senator Brown. Senator Tydequie, you have any questions?
Um, Madam Chair, if you don't mind, I'd like to hear what the administrator uh was about to explain. And, and so if you can, um, Mr Leon Grill, can you, uh, you were about to say something.
Yeah, so thank you, thank you, Sarah. So again, um. We do feel that the due process was, was completed and that these regulations are, are, are in fact. Um approved, but again, knowing that the legislature can call into regulations onto the floor. Uh when they see fit, we have to respond. And so again, um. We are just going through, following up with the process of having this, the regulations being heard again. But we, based on legal counsel, uh advice, we believe that since December. These regulations are in, in place. But then again, like, and I may not be saying this very well, but you, you Senator, as a leg, as part of the legislature. And call upon these regulations and make changes as uh maybe you and your fellow senators see fit. And then it's up to us to try to give you the technical guidance and information to try to make sure that. What we believe in and work very diligently. Stays on the regulations and nothing gets changed. So going through this process again. Uh is something that uh, because it was put on the floor, we will do. But we are asking, since it was passed already and you do have full authority to change. Any, any part of the regulations that you don't because it's been vetted, it's been through uh. Public comment, and again, even, even commercial and industrial entities have uh. Not produced or provided any significant comments. Uh in regard to um enforcement cases currently. According to Mr Ferrara, we don't have any on the, on the books. But again, what we're, we're, we're trying to do is just to keep up with what the legislature wants us to do. Um we're concerned that if, if others get pro, are, get approved via the. The ninety day or forty-five day process, um which is by law that it maintains and continues that way. And I guess, you know, but when you guys call us to the floor, we will come and, and speak and. And argue or, or justify our points of why these regulations should be, should remain the way they are. Again, I'm sorry about my voice, I'm just trying to fight this, drive through this thing and um. But it's not COVID and it's not streptone, I can tell you.
I always thought you sounded like that, Walter. Sounds normal to me. Yeah, I, I appreciate the, the comments and I think that uh. You know, it's better to be safe than sorry, you know, to go through this process. My only concern is the in-between time, you know, of. Anything that you implemented right now or um. Uh any penalties or anybody who are, were breaking any of these rules and regs that were put in place are basically introduced in the last term. Uh from December until now, uh it, it is concerning, you know, I, I, there is the um. Attorney General's letter that was presented in your, uh, by the way, uh, I really appreciate the PowerPoint presentation. Uh you did a great job. I always like what you did, uh always put, you guys always use this one on page eleven with the little boys and safeguarding my island. It's very cute. It breaks the monotony of, of the uh. Presentation to give you a little smile and remind ourselves that, you know, we're all here to, to help each other. And I think that's the intent of this is, is to make sure that uh we do it correctly. And I, I'm curious to, I'd like to see that statement made earlier by Kunchita Titano. On her concern, if we can get a copy of that, uh Madam Chair, I, I would appreciate it just for the record to us as well. And uh other than that, uh my concerns are, are, are the same as Senator Brown's. Um and uh. There's nothing more to say, but hopefully we can get this uh through and pass so that you guys can continue to do what you do. And that is to protect our environment on this island. Thank you so much, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator.
The, the triple A, this is followed, uh and this is part of it, and that's why I'm moving forward with this, this bill. Uh to, to make sure that we, we. uh, to, to make sure that we, we complete it. Um, and being that the triple A law was actually repealed and reenacted, i- it affected the older laws in the books. And so this is, this is why it's important to ensure that we follow, uh, this, this portion, uh, the triple A process through. Um, okay. See, are there any other questions? Okay, at this time or, uh, any other further testimonies? Okay, so at this time, uh, there are no further testimonies or, uh, comments or questions from my colleagues. Um, Bill one one forty-nine dash thirty-six C O R is duly heard. It is now three twenty-one P M. Uh, the committee, uh, is now adjourned and thank you for your participation.
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you.